Okay. It looks like 4:30 has arrived. And we do have four members of the council online. My understanding is that two council members will be at the park. So... But I don't know where Councilmember Hune is, so... Anyway, with that, we will call to order the study meeting in West Valley City Council. The first portion of our meeting will be dedicated to a virtual ribbon cutting that we will participate in. This is actually taking place at Peachwood Park, 3510 West, 3965 South. And so, I don't know what arrangements have been made for that. We do note that at least we have the four council members here. And I assume that Councilman Nordfeldt and Councilman Fittisimaneu are there. I got their pictures. So...
Yep, I'm here, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Jake.
I'm here as well.
Okay, thanks, Lars. Then Nicole, what arrangements have been made for us to participate in that? Will they be adding into what we're doing right here?
Yes, sir, we will have a screen come up here, should be here shortly, that will take us directly to the park. This is also being viewed on Facebook Live as well, so that our residents can see it there, too. So we should be here in just a second.
Okay, looks like it's getting up. Nicole, I'm under the assumption that they cannot hear us.
So hold this, right? I don't believe they can, sir.
Okay, there's Councilman Bueller there, so...
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for coming out to our ribbon cutting of the new Peachwood Park playground. We are so excited to have this here. And I'd like to thank all of our amazing park staff for all of the hard work that they've put into getting the park ready, getting the playground ready, so that we could have this wonderful opportunity today. I would also like to recog... Yes, thank you. Let's give them a hand. They've worked really hard, and this has not been an easy year for them, so we appreciate that. I'd also like to recognize our council members that are with us. In a minute, you'll be hearing from Councilman Steve Bueller behind me, Mayor Protam. And then we also have Councilman Don Christensen right over here. And I didn't see any others right now here, but we also have Mayor Bigelow, Councilmember Lang, Councilmember Nordfeldt, Fittisimaneu, and also Tom Hune. And so they are all watching via Facebook Live and through Zoom. So we have everybody with us today. And with that, I would like to say one more thing, and then we'll go into the program, which is very short. I would like to say thank you to everybody for social distancing and wearing your face masks. That's very important to us in our parks. We want to be sure that everybody stays healthy. So when we do finish and the children are on the playground, you know, please keep an eye on them. Let's make sure that we're wearing the masks or social distancing at all times. It's our brief program. First, we are happy to hear from Councilman Mayor Protam, Steve Bueller. Following Councilman Bueller, we have Louis Painter, who is... He owns Great Western Recreation, where we actually got the play structure from, and also represents PlayCor and Game Time. So we will go to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. It's good to see everybody here. This is a bigger crowd than I expected. You know, remodeling or opening a park or a park feature is a pretty big deal for me and for the mayor and city council. We discuss parks a lot. We want to make our parks in West Valley City the best of anywhere. And we're happy to see you all here today. This isn't really how it normally is, is it? But things haven't been normal for a while, so we're doing this remotely as well as a little bit in person. Try not to have a big crowd here in most of the city council. And the mayor, as Nancy Day mentioned, are not present personally. Neither is our city manager, Wayne Pyle. I still think it's worth noting, though, that there are more people here right now, more spectators than will be at the BYU home opener on Saturday. So that's pretty impressive. And kudos to West Valley City, staying safe and being able to proceed with this. We want to give our thanks to Utah Recreation and Parks Association, Great Western Recreation, PlayCor, and Game Time for funding with a matching grant. And it takes a lot of work and a lot of thought and a lot of preparation to do this. This isn't something that we just are overflowing with money and funds. We have a great city staff and parks department that are always looking for ways to find money, to find partners, to improve our parks, and make this... Continue to make West Valley City a great place to live. I want to read a little bit about the National Demonstration Site, which this is a national demonstration site. "West Valley Park Association's statewide initiative: A collaborative partnership between URPA, PlayCor, Game Time, and Great Western Recreation. The statewide initiative's primary goal was to provide education and funding to communities to create high-quality outdoor play destinations that intentionally are designed to promote community health. PlayCor's Center for Outreach, Research, and Education recognizes communities across North America for their leadership as projects of excellence. As a national demonstration site, we have implemented evidence-based design principles within the build environment to turn research into practice to promote the highest level of inclusive play. Peachwood Park serves as a model project of excellence for inclusion by applying a comprehensive design philosophy by utilizing the seven principles of inclusive playground design to innovate an outdoor play environment where both physical and social inclusion can occur to the greatest extent possible. Beyond... Or moving beyond minimum accessibility guidelines, this park intentionally addresses the development of the whole child, aligns with evidence-based design principles of the whole environment, and ultimately benefits the whole community by providing a meaningful destination for individuals of all ages and abilities to play together. A robust and balanced assortment of playground activities can be found to support the physical, social, emotional, sensory, cognitive, and communicative needs of all children, including those with disabilities. As a national demonstration site, we look forward to sharing our success nationally and continuing to learn from the positive impact our new outdoor destination has on the children, families, and communities we serve. I encourage each of you to take a moment to share your experience today, provide feedback, and contribute to ongoing outcomes sharing so that we can continue to partner together to bring high-quality outdoor destinations to West Valley City. Simply scan the QR code found on the National Demonstration Recognition signage located in front of the playground to take a quick survey. And that sign is right there. And you can take a picture of that with your smartphone and take the survey and let us know what you think, what we can do better, what we can do more of, and your thoughts and appreciation about this great feature that we've brought to West Valley City, our first inclusive playground feature. Again, many thanks to our partners, the West Valley City Council, Mayor, and staff. And personally, I hope that this playground will be used and greatly utilized by people of all abilities. We're all important, right? And we're all different, but we want this to be a place for this year and for years to come. And when things get back to normal, this playground will still be here and full of children of all abilities playing, having fun, and socializing with each other. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protam. First of all, I just want to thank Nancy and her staff and the mayor and council for being forward-thinking and understanding the needs within their community and creating spaces that are inclusive of everybody and being forward-thinking enough to understand that it doesn't have to be a massive-scale playground or park. We can look for ways to be inclusive in each project that we do, allowing kids and communities to be able to bond and grow together as they have playful experiences together. And so a big hats off to them for their forward-thinking and their leadership and taking this national demonstration site and national program and bringing it here on a local level to West Valley and creating a greater impact within the community that they serve. And so that's a big hats off to them. As you guys have an opportunity here in a moment to step out onto the playground and go through and experience the different features that this... You'll notice a lot of different sort of play that allow kids of all abilities to spend time with their peer group. And when you really think about it, that's what each one of us on a base level desires is just to have mutual experiences with our peer group and be included and be a part of what's going on within our community and have those social experiences, no matter what our ability is. And Sensory Wave Climber, you'll notice a lot of sensory elements and components and tactile elements all throughout the structure. It also has a raised portion in the middle of that climber so that mobility devices, wheelchairs, walkers can pull up to that and have side-by-side play experiences with children of all abilities within the community. As you notice, even the net climber, it's a little bit more physical of an activity, but it provides space so that somebody might be able to come underneath and be involved in that social and role-play game where if somebody's a spider and they're climbing around in the net, kids of all abilities can still be involved in that role-play activity. This structure not only allows... Provides a transfer platform and a ramp section to provide access. It also has a slide transfer, as you'll notice on this double slide, so that somebody can transition from a mobility device onto that platform and get into a riding position. Small things like that make a big difference in providing that inclusive element so that everybody can feel comfortable in this space. We also have a double slide there that so somebody can ride down the slide and assist as they come down the slide and return back to their mobility device. Again, as you go throughout, music is something that everybody can experience and be involved and engaged in socially and be able to participate in those activities. So again, really, as you think about inclusion and you think about this playground and different spaces within the city, there's always opportunity, no matter how large or small, to provide elements of inclusion and be more inclusive of every individual in the community. And that also provides another element of multi-generational play. You'll notice on this playground that it's easier for mom and dad, grandma and grandpa to access that structure and have some of those rich play experiences with their children and grandchildren that sometimes often as parents and as grandparents, I know with my children, sometimes I just want to take a seat on the park bench, and that's needed sometimes, too, to let kids go and play. But this also allows access for mom and dad and grandma and grandpa to have some of those rich play experiences side-by-side with their children and grandchildren and create lasting memories within the community that we all live. So thank you for being here today. And if you have any questions about any of the components on the structure, Nancy and her staff are here, and I'm here to help assist and answer any questions and foster some of those conversations within the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Louis. I realized after I spoke that I neglected to introduce myself. I am Nancy Day, the Parks and Recreation Director for West Valley City. And thank you. And I am always open for any suggestions, ideas, or concerns. So please reach out to me at any time. I've got some wonderful, wonderful staff here, and I'd like to thank them from my entire department. And then, of course, first and foremost, officials, our city administration, for making this happen. This is so needed. Both Mr. Painter and Councilman Bueller talked a little bit about inclusion. This is something that we are committed as a city and as a department to start seeing more of these elements in existing parks, as we can do them, and certainly as we design and develop new parks within our city. We're not just installing play equipment, but we are creating an experience that everybody can participate in. And some of the different elements that Mr. Painter talked about for inclusion, mobility impairments, autism, learning difficulties, behavioral issues, all of these different elements are a part of inclusion, as well as just bringing the family groups, the parents, the siblings, all abilities. Anybody with any type or any level of ability is welcome here and can participate, and we're just thrilled to have this. So with that, we are ready for the ribbon cutting. Now you'll see we have some blue X's here so that we can maintain our social distancing. But I believe we can have about 16 people up here. I would like to invite our elected officials to come up, please. And then let's go ahead and have Jason Erickson, who's my Assistant Director over parks. Would you like to come up, Jason? And Kent, as well. So let's face... Matt, which direction do you want them to face? For the... Face this way. Okay. And then let's get some of our community up here. If you or one of your children that you don't mind using a pair of scissors would like to come up, then let's please go ahead and do so.
Did you get one?
I did not, thank you. Once we have the ribbon cutting, let me finish the programming here real quick as everybody lines up. We have some staff from our Family Fitness Center, some of our recreation staff and programmers, that in the playground will be doing a little bit of activity with the children, with some of the different features that Mr. Painter spoke about. So if they would like to participate in that, then we will have some of our staff in there. And we would love that. Additionally, you may have noticed, right over by our horseshoe pit, we will be adding a cornhole, permanent cornhole set there. So you'll have a little bit more to enjoy here in the park as well. Are we ready? Anybody else? We have a few more spots over here. There's anybody else that would like to participate in that? Are we ready?
Down here, we've got a few more coming.
Oh, you can come right over here, man. All right, well, I think... Oh, one more. We have a couple more spots to the south. Are we good? All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming out. And please enjoy your new playground and in your park here. And we do have refreshments over at the table and Parks and Recreation kites for the children, if anybody would like a free kite. Thank you. Yeah, just go ahead and try to move.
Okay, that turned out very well. We will be taking a break now, I believe. Was that noticed, Nicole, that we would begin the rest of our meeting at 5:15?
It is on the agenda to restart at 5:15. We gave the ribbon cutting a full half an hour.
Okay, so we'll have a little bit longer break. We can't start early, I believe, if that's the way we hold to things. Is that correct?
I believe that if we wanted to state that we'll just be taking a 15-minute break, we can restart a little bit early, as long as we clarify that while we're live right now. But it's completely up to the discretion of the council.
Okay, well, let's take our 15-minute break, and we'll see if all the council members have been able to re-establish connections to be able to start the rest of our meeting. So with that, I would suggest that if you are stepping away, it looks like most everyone has muted, except for Mr. Isaac, Karen Lang. We'll go ahead, and I'm going to mute myself as well for 15 minutes. And so that will put us back here at basically five after five to verify that the others have made their connections, so we can get started. have made their connections, so we can get started. With that, thank you, and we'll see you in 15 minutes as we take a short break.